I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, may be seated, every role call members please.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Thank you ma'am. With that, we need to approve the agenda. Have a chance to look at anything we had to do at this arms.
I don't have anything.
With that, we will entertain most approve the agenda is presented to you.
I make the motions. We approve it.
Ms. Hood made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second. Any discussion? All very well. Say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to approve the minutes from October the 5th, 2022. If you had a chance to look at those, I hope you have. If so, we need a motion to approve the minutes as presented to you.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? All very well. Say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item, the citizen expression period. I'll read this, then we'll go into that. Citizen expression period is upon the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and the county and or order organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, has anyone signed up, Ms. Harns?
They have not.
We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close citizen expression period. And anyway, with that, anyone wishing to speak may come to the podium and do so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Laura Woodso, and I'm from the Snowflake Community. I'm here today to again talk about our road situation and what we're dealing with every day living on the dirt road. We've been attending road meetings for many, many years, me and my family, and I mean, when I was in high school in the 90s, we'd been coming. We kind of gave up there for a little while, and then we started seeing some roads around that start to get paved, so we thought it'd be a good idea to come back and see if we could get some stuff done.
That's Snowflake Road?
Snowflake Road, yes. So, all this stuff right here is all the six-year plans from 2003, I'm sorry, 2002, 2003, 2004, '06, and '08. And we've been on the six-year road plan since 1997. Actually, I think there's one in here from 1997. And still yet, we are still on dirt road. So, I just want to know, like, what is, I mean, what does the six-year plan do? I mean, I'm not seeing any, anything come from it. Another issue is my driveway. My driveway, I can only use half of it because there is a drain tile, and not that it's full, but water never runs through it. It runs on top of the road between the road and my driveway and creates a huge ditch. I'm talking, I could go up to here standing in it. So, there's no way that my vehicles could get in there. And also, we're, imagine what you're paying for vehicles right now. Thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars right now, and we're riding on trash roads that are running our vehicles. And I mean, most of us work and we pay our taxes, so that is just, it's just sad that we're still riding on roads that, you know, we're riding on rock bed. You know, we can't have nice things outside. You can't have outdoor furniture, any of that stuff. I mean, it's getting ruined. Our houses, we have to wash those yearly, you know, to get the dust off of them. And we have a tourism spot on our road. We have a zoo, which that part is paved, but I'm telling you what a beautiful ride it would be if they could come all the way from Snowflake into Nicholsville in, on a paved road. And it, and it really wouldn't take that much. It's not that many miles out through there. And we have buses that run that road. We have FedEx, UPS, and that's dangerous. My teenage daughters, I would not allow them to ride up to use the dirt part of the road at all. They are not allowed to go up through there because it's scary and it's dangerous. There's trees and bushes and limbs that are growing over. You can't see around some of the curves. But basically, just, I mean, we're paying taxes like everybody else on our real estate and our property, and it's, it's being ruined by a road. And the amount of money that we're paying for what we have and what we own, it's kind of, I mean, that's just ridiculous, honestly. I would hope that VDOT would give the board a little bit more, a little bit more say-so in the roads around this county. I mean, there is resursicing happening that don't need to happen, and I know that guy, you know, that's not on you guys, but I would just hope that VDOT would take that into consideration, that you guys know what's going on in this county. But I really would like to show that that, I would like to be shown that that six-year plan really works, and I appreciate you guys listening to me today.
Thank you ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Richard Gilmore. I live on Ballfield Road. And I guess about all I want to do is say, us too, Ms. Woodso, I'm calling in. I did have a lot of things, but fortunately, I met with the VDOT representatives who are here at this point. And they gave me their cards and asked me to email to them any of our concerns that we have. And one of the gentlemen's responsible for maintenance in Williams County, so thank you. It's a valuable contact. I wanted to thank you all for the letters you did send to the governor, trying to get VDOT some assistance and funding. I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything from that?
I haven't. You know, Ms. Harns, did you hear anything back from that?
Not anything additional.
Nothing additional.
They had passed it on to whoever that, what we talked about last meeting.
Yeah, last meeting, I mentioned that I'd met with the director of VDOT in the Bristol District, and we had discussed the letter because it was sent back to our local Bristol District, the one that went to the governor. But that's all of her.
Well, I'm still trying to prepare a letter to our local state representative on this issue. And the things I'm trying to get from VDOT is some more facts and figures as it relates to roads in Scott County, which I found difficult to get locally. Maybe it's my inability, but you know, my concern has increased now because of the school bus accident on the Twin Springs Road. Granted, that's a paved road, but it's a narrow road. And I'm really concerned that a lot of our roads are dirt roads that are narrow. School buses run them twice a day. The school bus runs ours, the drivers said that's the most dangerous road. He hauls children down. And I think the only way that we're going to get any response monetarily anybody is to come up with some data as it relates to unpaid roads or narrow roads and school buses. So, that's my plan from now, now on, and hopefully, I'll get enough information from the VDOT leaders to proceed with that. But if you hear anything, Ms. Harns, from any of the people, I appreciate no one's life. I'll make a fool of myself and I'm not a senator, but I love the representative.
You have presented yourself well in all of these and doing this. I commend you for it and being here. And there is folks here that we've, if you mention, you'll hear from them. So, they're listening to you too, the VDOT people, so you have been very good in what you're doing and presenting this, so we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm a wee bit ashamed, but I got one question. I'm Peggy Tosh from Snowflake Road, and I'm back. But I want to ask one question. You know, you can get grants for everything. Can we get a grant? To help with the road, to hit VDOT?
I don't, I've never heard of that happening. The only thing I've ever, that's in the works is, believe it or not, it's the High Inn Road. That the federal dollars is going to go into some of that to pay part of that from the Wise County line down. Well, that's going to happen, I don't know, but there is federal dollars coming for that. So, I've never, other than that, I've never, usually they don't. But any of the big projects, the mayor and other staff, they do get federal dollars for it. As far as secondary roads and paving and stuff, they use, I haven't heard of, maybe Mr. Sumter, him can answer that. I've never heard that happen. Be good if they would.
Oh, yeah. Well, put in for it if we can get it.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Amanda Martin. I'm with United Way of Southwest Virginia. I'm here with Kristy Lester, the Director of Development.
You, hang on, you're on the agenda.
Oh, great. Well, then I'll just be patient.
We'll bring you right back. I'm actually here for him, so don't go. We'll have you on there.
I'll go.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? With that, we will close citizen expression period. We don't have anything to vote on, but folks, these roads are a concern. You know, it concerns me, the people that drive in very expensive vehicles now, they, about all of them are, and the school buses, what they're having to go through. But hopefully, some things will happen, and Mr. Sumter will be up here next to speak about some of this. And we've worked with him for a long time here. I've known him for a long time, and I think we'll be pleased, I think the county will be pleased with what will come out of all of this. So, anyway, anything, anybody got any comments here about citizen expression period? The comments as made anyone?
I would just hope that Mr. Sumter probably could shed some light on the lady that spoke first. What was her name? Laura?
Yeah, Ms. Woodso.
The Snowflake Road, if it's on the six-year plan or not.
It's not officially right now. What I, you know, I've tried to, I've asked Ms. Harns about it. The only thing that I can remember, I, I'm like Laura, I remember when I was small, I remember that road being paved, little chunks at a time. It's been like three or four times, and I'm, I'm going to say what's happened. It's been on the six-year plan for those little short chunks. But right now, from what I understand, it's not on the six-year plan officially. Now, we did vote on that two years ago. It's, it, it should be one of the next ones to go on there because we all picked a road. Four of them made it, so there should be three more. Right? Am I saying that right? So, it, it should go up, but right, right now, officially, it's not on there. But that, that's, that's just my opinion, what, what's happened over the years. Because there, there's a lot of roads, Ball, Ballfield Road is, is the same way. They, they paved like, what, a half a mile, maybe? And then the rest of it is, and they paved it where, basically, there's few houses. The most houses is unpaved, were, so I, I don't know what, of course, it's been like that for a while, but. And, and I've heard situations of like, like Ball, Ballfield Road, and maybe even Snowflake Road, the first part of it is paved. But in, in the system at Roanoke or Richmond or wherever, sometimes it shows those roads as being paved, but truly, they're not. Only a portion of it is. So, when, when they fill out a complaint, sometime, I, I've heard of some situations, they'll get a phone call back saying, well, that road's paved, or, or a response back, saying that, that road's paved, but of course, the local people would know that it's not. But I don't know what that does to, to that system that they're wanting them to use, whether that kicks that complaint out, that work order out, before it even gets to the locality. I don't, I don't know what's happening there. But, but I was, I'm not going to say, but I won't listen to what VDOT has to say, then, well. But that, but, but officially, right now, it's not on the six-year plan officially. So, whenever the money, see, now there's a lock on, on the money. They're not putting any more money toward that, as far as I know, toward the six-year plan. So, whenever that money is released, you know, I think it's Darrell, I've, I've heard him talk about that. The, two, two years ago was the first time that we've been able to add any roads, pretty much, to the six-year plan. So, it's been several years since any were even added because of freeze on the money. And that's where we're at now. Again, a freeze on the money. But anyway, that's, that's my basic understanding of it.
Anyone else? For one thing that happened, you get a little tax rebate back from the state earlier, a month or so ago, and I wish, I mean, yeah, money's good. We, everybody can use a bit of extra cash, but I was hoping some of that would go to things like this. You put all that money together, went a long ways for, as all of the state to have done something with that, but they gave you a rebate, which, that's a good thing, getting people, getting money back in their pocket. But anyway, that's either here or nowhere. We can't control that, but anyway. Anyone else for Mr. Sumter, can I ask? Alan Sumter, you're up. Item number seven. Alan, he, he was, was here for a long time, and he moved up in the world, and as he moved up again, I guess that's a, that's an upward move, not a lateral move, but very good to work with, and I think, give him some time, that you will see some things that will, I mean, he, he knows how to get stuff done. I'm saying the others don't, but Alan, I've worked with him a long time, and he can take the heat. I've seen him in a public hearing or two, and he takes the heat good too, so. But I don't want that to happen today, but welcome.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's good to be back with you all. I was, for everyone, I'm Alan Sumter. I'm the residency administrator in the Woz Residency. I took over effective September the 10th. Mr. Paul Maddox, that was the residency administrator after I left, moved back toward the eastern part of the state. And I was asked if I would consider coming back, and so I, I said, only if Mr. Mann is still on the board.
Oh, no, not that.
So, I, I did come back, and I'm giving you a little background. Like Mr. Mann said, I was the residency administrator here in the Woz Residency from 2010 to 2019. And then I've been in Abington the last three years and coming back, and I'm working on trying to get re-familiar with everything that's going on in the four counties that we cover. Finding a lot is going on, and got, we've had some faces that have changed. As we were talking before the meeting, Jackie Christian, that was assistant, he's, he's retired now. And so, we've got some new faces, but I've got good help, and they're, they're doing good on helping me get back going. So, I, I want to try to not take too much time, but I've got several things, I guess, in this first meeting, I just kind of just want to go over with you here, coming back. Hopefully, I won't do so long. We have to take an offer again after I'm done there. But, so, in general terms, just kind of want to mention to you, I handed out to you all before the meeting, a, a report. We're going to try to work on getting that report. Was pushed for time, there's time to, Ms. Harns, get in your board packet prior to the meeting, a little earlier on, going into the future. But the intent of that report, what we're going to do is try to cover the, what we kind of have planned, the highlights of work coming up and then over like the next three-month period. And just so you know, I'm going to try to come and visit with you in person quarter. If that works, that's kind of what we did before, so about once a quarter, we'll try to, try to come and visit with you. And then we've got some highlights on there of things that we have done. We've got the construction update. And then we will have a section on there where it says previous requests and, and comments. Those are things that will be, that we receive from you, either like in this meeting, that we take it back and check into, or things that maybe you call us in the, in the, you know, say you call our office or call some of us, say, hey, could you look at this road or whatever? And when we check into it, then we'll put that onto the report as to where our status is there or there. So, I'm going to cover this kind of the report part of what we got going on. So, as I started to come, come back and make the transition back, the letter that was sent in, that I was giving copies of those, that Ms. Harns had sent to, come back to Ms. Crowder, our district engineer, and I started working to get up to speed on a few things. And so, one of the things that came up is that we have, as far as a maintenance need, is that we've got a need, try to do mowing a little bit more efficiently going forward, and we're going to work on that. At the time that the letters went in, we had worked on mowing the Twin Springs Road, and they'd gotten that done kind of in a timely manner. The timing of the letter and that kind of conflicted with each other, but we, they, it did get done. But as we move forward into next year, we're going to look at the cycles of the mowing, when we do them. Try to get, the, the second cycle was probably a little bit late this year, to try to get that, that going. One of the problems that we have to face and adjust with is that seem like all over, we have a lot of Johnson grass on the secondary roads. And Johnson grass can, we can mow it and have it down like that today, and in two weeks, you know, it's up over top of our head and again, and it's a little difficult to get out and mow it every time it grows up like that. So, that causes some visibility issues, but we're going to look at, you know, key areas, a long routes, like coming in now of the schools and things like that, try to adjust those intersections, and we'll try to do a little bit better job of keeping up with those in the future. We, we also have some storm debris that it, are along many of our roadways. Dead trees are in the ditches and shoulders and so forth, that we've acquired a rental gravel truck, much like the loggers use, pick it up, put it in the truck. We're going to mobilize one of those into Scott County here, and hopefully, within the next month or so, and it'd be a project that our crews work on through the winter, on trying to clean up a lot of the secondary roads that got a lot of debris. We've already been through on Route 23 and cleaned up the debris that was alongside the roadway on 23. And although it's not in your area, we've been working on the focus of that all the way to Kentucky line through Woz, trying to get 23, which is much like we consider our interstate in this residency and taking care of that. So, you can kind of see on there the, some of the requests and things that's been taken care of. Hopefully, Ms. Harns, the tree that you talked to me about on Fairview, been removed?
Not unless it's been the last two days.
Okay. We'll check into that?
It's marked with the orange X.
Okay. We've got to work with, trying to get the district tree crew to come in and do that. One other thing I'll just mention in, in, in general, that I've seen this even when I've been in the last three years here in the Abington Residency, and then coming back, is that we've, we've seen our contractors be affected with, like with resource issues, just like anyone else would. They, there's many of them, like tree crews, that are having difficulty getting, you know, workers to work for them. And so, we, we can ask for multiple crews, and many times, one crew is all that they can come up with, and so, that spreads resources thin. We have, like in Guard Grill, we have a contractor that works for the entire Bristol District to do guard grill repairs, and he's been able to only come up with one crew. And so, and the interstate takes priority for the hits that are on the interstate. So, if you see, I kind of use an analogy, like, I think probably many of us have been out like to restaurants and yawn in, and service is slow because, you know, you'll see that there's only like one waiter or working, only one cook in the kitchen. And we like, you know, I want my food, and somebody wait on me, and my drink's not being refilled. Well, somewhat, we're experiencing similar things with our work as well, like with our contract industry of trying to be able to supply us with all the resources that we need to be able to take care of things there. So, we've, we've been working, doing a lot of state force work, doing a combination here in this residency of working to build the rural rustic projects that are there, and then try to take care of the, the maintenance as well. We've not had a hired equipment contract for a little while. We are working on getting a hired equipment contract back out to bid, and hopefully, we're going to get some bidders on that to where we'll have additional resource, that we can take our crews that have been having to do both maintenance and projects, like the rural rustics, and focus our state force crews back on performing regular routine maintenance. The tree trimming, the pothole patching, the mowing, those types of things that needs to be done. And then we can use the hired equipment back to do like the project work. You have on there the, the status of the projects that, that are there on the, the construction schedule for this year. We have about five rural rustics that we are working on, that are active in the current funding program. And you can see the status of those. We're trying to work on getting some of those with a chip seal on them to get them through the winter, and then finish them up by paving them when summer and spring comes around next year. We have two other projects that are there on that second sheet. That's the 619, the High Inn, that's under environmental review. And 689, the end Good Cooper Road, that we're working on doing our engineering work, or get it to go in next summer as, as well. So, that is kind of the update of where we are on things. Now, I will, I'll kind of try to address the, the folks that have come up and some of their concerns, and talk about that for just a minute. And Mr. Herron kind of did a good job kind of summarizing that too. Those two roads are not on the current six-year plan. And I've, as said, I've been around for quite a while in VDOT and working. And so, the way that things happen with six-year plan, there was a time back in, I guess, the mid 2000s or so, 2005, 2006, I don't know if it's, many of you were on the board at that time or not. But there was once upon a time in about all counties, experienced this myself, is that folks would come in and they would say, well, we want on the six-year plan. And so, road would be put on the six-year plan. And there would be put like a thousand dollars on it to say a four, five hundred thousand dollar project, to get it show up on the plan. And the, obviously, not enough money to fund that, but like an example, I was once in Russell County and, and responsible for that area, and there was a time that every gravel road in Russell County was on the six-year plan. And from what I understand, I think about the same situation was occurred that with previous boards, that about every road in Scott County was on the six-year plan. Well, that really wasn't realistic, because you can't put a road on the six-year plan and call it a six-year plan and funding program whenever, you know, realistically, it's going to take millions and millions of dollars to build all those roads. That's not going to happen within six years. So, our administration that was in office back in that time, around 2005, 2006, said, we want you to go and work with the boards and revise the six-year plans to make them a realistic plan of what can be built within the funding that's being received. a realistic plan of what can be built within the funding that's being received at the time." So, honestly, that resulted in a lot of roads being taken off the actual funding plan and so, that's like what you're talking, Mr. Herron, probably occurred at that time with, like Snowflake Road, I'm sure that's probably what the case was. So, like in the previous time that I was here, and we worked, and we had like a priority listing at the county level, like you've done, to put roads that are not on the plan, that whenever we get roads completed and the next cycle of funds come up, that we can pull off that and insert that on the six-year plan and have a realistic timeframe of being able to get those roads built in a period of time. So, in other words, if a road is on the six-year plan and it's put in, like we'll be coming in the spring to do another revision, we do it every year, and so, the road that if it's put on and it's in the out year of, say, 2000, I guess it'll be for 29, I guess, at that point, will be the year that we'll be adding to, is that when 2029 comes, then we realistically hoping with the funds that we're projected to get, that that road will be built that year. Whereas in the past, that road would have been on there and it'd been showing on there. 2029, well, 2029 would have come, and it is still a thousand dollars on it, and you've got 20 other roads that are funded, and there's no way, and so, it just keeps floating back and back and back. So, I'm glad that you have, because we did add several roads, if you remember before I left, there was one year we added eight roads to the six-year plan, because we revised estimates and so forth. And we took that list way down the line, getting it complete, and so, I remember, if I recall right, and working like Mr. Christian at the time, we were down to only a couple of roads left to add to the plan, I believe at that time, that were on the priority list. So, as I understand it, I guess I picked up is when you all have worked to identify additional roads to add to that going forward, that when we come in the spring and do the next update, then we can consider adding Snowflake, Ballfield, whatever is on your next in the line list to that update of the plan. And for those that came that's in the audience, we have a six-year plan public hearing that's held where that I'd encourage you, it'll be advertised, that when you come to the board to ask and make public during that period of time, that your road be added to the plan, and then we'll work on getting in at that time. So, that's kind of how that works with that process. Does that, I know sometimes, kind of like when you go to the doctor and you're in the doctor's office, and he starts using big technical terms, and you sit there, you know, it's like, "I really don't understand what you're saying." And I've tried to simplify that as much as I can, that process. Does that sound, y'all kind of, y'all there with me on that? Okay.
Mr. Supter, you've got here projects completed, and you've got Beeline Road, Route 753, and you've done a good job. It really looks nice, but that's a small section of Beeline Road. The major section, which is heavily traveled, that 753 is rarely traveled, but Beeline Road primarily is on 624, and it's not paved, but it's on the plan, I put it on it. But I've got complaints from people about a very rural area road being paved, or it's got tar and gravel on it. It's Bunker Road, and it has the same road number as Beeline, 624. And I had asked somebody before, did they make a mistake? And I went out there over the weekend, and part of that road is paved, and to my knowledge, Bunker Road has never been on any plan, and I don't know how that it got the tar and gravel on it, or why, if it was a mistake, did they mean to put part of it on Beeline Road, which is 624? But, you know, I've gotten calls about it, and it makes me shake my head, I don't understand.
Was it previously tar and gravel?
No, Bunker Road, my family owns property out in there, and we have cabins, there are a lot of cabins out there, and it's very much a recreational area where people, you know, have cabins, there are a few people live on that road, but not many, that road is not really traveled very much.
Real quick, let me ask, are you all aware, Paul, last year, he wanted us to find a road to tar and chip to, a road that we had major issues with the drainage and washing out during storms, and he chose Bunker Road to. Okay, then that was like a pilot experiment?
It was from very close to the bridge.
Okay. So...
It's really strange.
We do.
It makes me shake my head.
Well, what we do occasionally is we will have like a road that like if, and we have a safety improvement type fund that's very limited money, but sometimes if we have a road that we're having to go out over and over and over like that, that we've got like a small little fund that we can go that actually saves us money for the maintenance in the long run, so that's probably what that was done.
Well, I've only gotten, I've only gotten one call about Bunker Road, and it was my brother who hunts back there, and he called here two, three years ago and asked me if I could get some gravel to put on it. And that's the only complaint, I've been on this board since 2020, and I haven't gotten any complaints on Bunker Road. It was, it was very strange to me, it makes me shake my head, as it does. Even my brothers, they were amazed that their hunting road was being paved. And, you know, I just, you know, there are so many needs in residential areas, and 624 is heavily traveled, Beeline Road is a heavily traveled road, and I've been trying ever since, even before I was elected to the board, to get Beeline Road paved, because I get more calls about Beeline Road than any road in District Six.
It sounds like it's on the plan.
I put it on the plan, but a man who was here, he's not here today, I don't know, I don't remember his name, but he told me it'd be years before that's paved.
Well, if it's on the plan, then like I said, if it's in that six-year funding program, then the intent now is to get the road built during that six-year period of time. So, we'll, we'll take a, I'll take a look at that, make a note and see where it stands in there, I'll talk with you there, I'm sure we'll talk at some point offline about some of that.
Do you see any increase in funding coming in the near future, any increase for rural rustic?
I'm not aware of any, again, you know, you have to remember that the funds that come from that are controlled by formula, that comes by a formula that's established through the General Assembly.
Right.
And so, and then, you know, it's based on gas tax and, you know, the revenues that come in from that, so if people are buying more gas and diesel and buying more cars, the title taxes come into VDOT, too, then that, you know, equates out to more funds that's, you know, comes to VDOT. So, as far as any additional funds, you know, I will get an update on what funds are available for the six-year program prior to coming to you to update the plan in the spring. So, that's when we will really know if there's any, any increase of any funds.
Currently, that's around a million dollars a year for pay grants.
Mr. Supter, a lot of people think the real estate taxes goes from the road, but they do not.
No, they don't, our funding comes from, again, like I said, from fuel and titles and those types of things. So, whenever you go and buy your tax, or whenever you buy a new car and pay that title tax, portion of that comes, and then going to the pump, so.
I don't have a question, but I've got a comment. It seems to me that a lot of the problems with roads, small things like trees falling into the roads, potholes, it might have begun when we, when the state, and this is higher up than you, started getting rid of our local VDOT departments and going to contractors. We were told probably three or four months ago, maybe during COVID, that contractors were coming back and saying, "We can't do this for the cost, we're going to have to increase our prices." I would hope somebody in Richmond is keeping track of what they've done by doing away with our local VDOT places.
We, I'm a 28-year VDOT veteran, and I consider myself a lifelong VDOTer, because my dad was a maintenance superintendent, like at the Fort Blackmore and Patinsville type office over in Jonesville, that's where I grew up. And so, I've been around it all my life, and I can remember when our area headquarters had as many as like 24 people, and now we have right around 10 to 12 people at an area headquarters, is what our staffing level is. And so, we work to supplement that with the contractors. It is a fine balance, it does cost, but that's the way that when everything's working good, that we get the work accomplished. So, as I said, what we're hoping is that we can get some hired equipment contractor back to be able to utilize, to work on some of the project type work that we've got, that will free up those people at Fort Blackmore and Patinsville to address more of the regular routine maintenance like you're talking about out there with that. And then also, another thing that we're working on, too, is we've identified some, gone through and kind of script our budget, looking, and we've identified some money to put forth to some tree trimming, beyond what, most of the tree trimming is funded through the Bristol District Office and the roadside division, it's called, and so, we have identified some funding that we're going to try to supplement that and see if the tree trimming contractor, and he seems to be able to, to add an additional crew on, we're going through the winter, try to get them in with a focus on working here in Scott County to try to, to address some of the tree trimming. I can tell you, it's not going to address everything, because we have a lot of needs, a lot of roads, as I call it, are tunnelled in, and you see, but we're going to try to address some of the more critical areas, some of the higher traffic routes, and try to make a little bit of a difference on that in going through the winter and into the spring.
If, I think if the local board of supervisors had a little more say in what roads we're taking care of, we know these roads, but all we can do is calling complaints just like these people, that's the only recourse that we've got. And money from Richmond, Danny, you'll have to, when this government come in, how much money did he find in excess?
Well, it was $2 billion, and it went up, then that's when he got that rebate back we got back a few weeks ago.
$2 billion, he found?
Actually, it had been more than that, I don't know how you lose $2 billion, but
$2 billion when he went in, and these 300, $500 rebates that we got, I'd rather give that up and have money that maybe we have some control of, we know these roads.
And the, you know, the thing that, you know, you realize that me standing here, I have, I'm just have the ability to work with what funds that we're given here locally.
I hope everybody understands that, and it's a funding thing, it's not, it's out of your control, it's just a funding thing, if it don't calm down, you can't do it, so.
And one final comment that I will make regarding the, on the Snowflake Road, is the lady that spoke, we've taken note, and we will work on trying to check into the drainage problem that she's taken or talked about, and see if there's something that we can do with that. When folks like the ones here today have come and, you know, spoken, we may not be able to go in and pave the road tomorrow, but we will, if there are things that are mentioned like that, we will investigate them and try to see if the road, as it is, has any maintenance needs and try to work on taking care of those.
I think what they've run into there, where she's talking about, the road is down to the bedrock, there is no, there's no way unless you go in there and use a hammer or something to break that, to put a drain tile in. Ponderosa Road is the same way. There is a stretch of Ponderosa Road that has no drain tiles, and it's, it has a real steep grade, but it's the same way.
Okay, well, we'll check into that, I promise you that, we'll check into it.
But you know, soon, soon the day, and I know a lot of this goes higher, you know, it's going to have to start at Richmond, we're going to have to have more funds, so Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Piggan, you know, need to look into this and find out, but, you know, I done found what they called the, I found a, an article, and I've talked about this before, it was an article up in Northern Virginia that talked about the blueprint plan, and I wondered, what's the blueprint plan? So, I looked that up through VDOT, and I actually found a, I don't know what you'd call it, I guess it's a letter, but of course, it was in October 1st, 2009. Tim Kane's name is on it, he was governor at the time, Yvonne Miller, Charles Colgan, Joe May, Lacy Putney, and it was brought by Pierce Holmer, some of those names might mean something to you, of course, we know who Tim Kane was, but it, I'll read just a little bit of it. "The vision outlined for VDOT in the comprehensive plan, which is the blueprint plan, and memorized in Chapter 781, clearly articulates an agency whose mission and program are focused on safety, service, and preservation of our assets. A VDOT that while smaller," now, that's what all this was about, was to make VDOT smaller, there was a big deficit, I think, that year or something. "will be necessary to be proportioned differently in providing services through partnership and collaboration, both externally and internally," and it goes on, but then it actually breaks down, that's when we lost, round about the time when they closed Nicholsville, when they closed Fort Blackmore, or the old Fort Blackmore, of course, Gate City's now closed. And all these were on this comprehensive plan when they started closing, and of course, it was all over the state of Virginia, it wasn't just Scott County, but, you know, there were several jobs, you know, I think just at Nicholsville, it was like 11 or 12 men and women, I guess, that worked at Nicholsville, that's no longer there. Well, it's there, but nobody's there. And, you know, that's, in my opinion, that's where it started, I'm sure there's more recent updates to all that, but there, there has to be more funding that comes from Richmond to change these roads, so, you know, I, you know, I guess everybody liked the road paved, but it's going to be a while for like Snowflake before theirs is going to be able to get paved. In that time, there's going to have to be some sort of maintenance schedule, and I don't know, maybe you already have that in place, I don't know for sure, but maybe have those roads maintenance every year to where, you know, the ditches are clean, you know, one thing that I've saw, too, there's a buildup of excess gravel and mud and stuff on each side of the road, so, of course, what that does when the water gets there, it just cuts the road, there's nowhere for the water to go, even if the ditch is clean. So, there's a lot of places like that, I was on the Gate Road the other day, which is in the Taylor Town community, just below Nicholsville, and there are two ditches in that road. I know two young girls that go to Twin Springs, they drive small civic type vehicles. I don't see how they get over them, it'd be better to get in the ditch and go around those places, I mean, it is, but there, a lot of them are down to the bedrock, you know, they're just, there's nothing really to work with, and I don't know what it takes... they're just, there's nothing really to work with. And I don't know what it takes, you know, for, for that to change, for, to have some, I mean, you have to have something to work with before you, you can't just.
You've got to add stone to it.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, that's the only way. And you know, where there's no drain tiles, uh, I noticed on, on the Gate, Gate Road, there is, there's personal, not personal property, but real estate property that is being destroyed, uh, because there's no water management. And all this water is going to one place. And I bet there's a hundred tons of gravels in this pasture field on this guy's land that he won't be able to use. Uh, on Ponderosa Road, it's, uh, there, there's one place, I bet it's 300 yards long and a hu- a hundred foot wide. Uh, of course, it's, it is, it's a wooded area, but all that runoff coming from that gravel part of that road is going right there in that one spot. I, who knows? There might be a million tons of gravel that is just, but it's ruined. If, I won't say ruined. I, I, you can always fix something, but the money that it would take that property owner to try to clean that up, if they wanted to, let's say, cut that timber and make pasture land out of that, it would cost a fortune to get that cleaned up. And it, it's, it's destroying, uh, property. You know, there's, there's a place and I, uh, Duane was, is that his name? Uh, that, Duane, I couldn't think.
Stanelton.
Uh, no, for VDOT.
Oh, Wade, Wade.
Wade, yeah, Wade. Uh, you know, I, I showed him some places. There, there's a place on 71 just below J and P. And I, I was going to meet with, uh, Mr. Hartless there last week, but something come up. I couldn't. Uh, it's doing the same thing, but it, it's on 71, uh, that, uh, it's just below, uh, J and P, uh, where you turn off and go to Longhollow. But it's right on 71 where the runoff is just going in this guy's pasture field. And it's, uh, Wade, Wade knows about that. And I, I'm still going to get with Mr. Hartless. There's, there, there's another one or two, uh, that I'd like to show him. But, but it all, it all has to come from Richmond. It's got us, it's got to make a change from Richmond. I, there, there's not enough funding, which that creates not enough manpower and it, there, there's going to have to be some changes because our roads are getting to the point that it's going, if they're just being, they're going to be impassable. And, and if, if things go the way, way they are, but I'll, I'll push.
Well, you know, as you said there, you know, you've got those concerns and everything, but I'm pleased to be that we would try to what we've got to prioritize and work and take care of things as best as we can. So.
Real quickly, uh, welcome back again. So I look forward to working with you and appreciate your, uh, presentation today. And I'd just like to mention a couple of things.
Okay.
And I'd probably like to get with Wade or somebody so we can probably ride, you know, if we need to to go look at it. Um, 614 AP Quarter Highway.
Okay.
Um, you mentioned logs in the ditches. I think they were close to Barker's Chapel Church where the, um, um, utility people, uh, did some cutting there last year, I guess it was. And the, uh, the wire right of ways, uh, some of those logs have rolled down into the ditches. So unless y'all remove them, they're still there.
Okay.
And I'll double check on that.
Okay.
Are they supposed to clean that up after that? Like same thing's happened on Route 72. They're cutting a power line right away. They're, they're chipping some of it. To a big extent, they're just leaving. It looks awful, but are they supposed to clean all that up when they did?
No, they've got a right of way too. So, um, you know, that allows them to do within their right of way. Of course, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, on our right of way, you know, theirs and ours kind of, you know, it bets each other at times, but, um, you know, if there's a problem that really, you know, coming on.
But it looks bad. I mean, it's not the safety things. It looks bad too there where they, they cut that stuff and just leave it. And like, like, like the one.
Just an eyesore. Close to Barker's Chapel. I mean, it's, it's that close to the road. I mean, so, uh.
You notice that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that where, where you live, they, they've done that.
Yes, all the way up through there.
Yeah.
And also, um, uh, with the contract services using the bush hog, you know, they keep it down close to the ground. And so there's a lot of brush, whereas if you didn't use a sickle mower, it would take care of a lot of issues. And Wade helped us out on a couple of drives, you know, a couple of roads that way. But 6, 614 has, uh, a lot of issues up through there that way. And, uh, and actually cars have hit some of the brush that's leaning over and actually, you know, damaging, you know, cars and so forth. And one last thing. You've heard this one before, and I guess we'll have an opportunity to bring it up whenever we bring up roads again. Blue Bell Drive, East Quarter Valley. And you probably are familiar with that subdivision. It's paved. Um, quite frankly, I've seen a lot of roads that are much more narrow than that is. It's been, you know, recently done, uh, whereas two vehicles cannot even pass or whatever. That's not the case with this Blue Bell Drive. You can pass easily going up and down there. Uh, they have everything ditched out and, and it's been that way for years. As, as in terms of, uh, adding that on, I guess, a plan because, um, and y'all have looked at that. You were going by.
I, I can't remember, but if it's paved already, we won't put it, you can't go on the system.
Well, right. It's a.
Yeah. It'd be something for, if we need to look at it from a, a maintenance need.
Right. That, that's what, y'all, it's not in the system right now.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay. So that should be like a rule addition. Okay.
Okay, rule addition. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
And it's, it's very nice road. I'd just like for you to take a look at that, you know, when you can.
Okay. Joey, do we have an estimate or anything on it?
No, we don't have an estimate for it yet, but it would, rule addition would be the process we need.
Yeah.
And that would be with working with the county to drive that.
We could probably get a projected cost on it. So what, what might cost to?
Well, I can imagine you'd have to do, you know, very much at all to really, I mean, they've, they've really done a good job.
Okay.
It's just bad, you know, when the snowplows pass by there in the wintertime and.
Understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Does, does anyone else have anything to add to my list?
Appreciate you coming.
Okay.
Good having you back.
All right. Uh, it's good to be back. We, uh, uh, look forward to working with you. We'll do what we can, try to work on some of these things. Uh, in 28 years, I've never found a magic lawn yet, but.
Still looking at it.
Yeah, still looking at it. Uh, next on, I think you have on agenda, Mr. Mullins is going to talk to you about some, um, potential abandonment on some bridges that have reached the vision, uh, as one of us to consider. Uh, so, um, he's coming up the next day.
Thank you, sir. Next time, Joey Mullins here, he's with VDOT and it's about a bridge abandonment on Gillenwater, uh, brother. Thank you, Colin. Uh, so anyway. How you been doing?
All right. Good morning.
You heard a lot this morning, I guess.
Yeah. I appreciate it. I've been taking notes. So, um, and I think I passed, I think I may have missed you on that.
That's, uh, what you've got in front of you. And Bill has it pulled up there as well. Um, this is the bridge. Uh, we received this from our structure and bridge division. Basically as they're going through their plans, um, you know, they like us, they are, um, they have a certain budget that they have to work within and maintenance of the existing structure of bridges. Um, it, as they're looking at these, um, they're going through this list and they have what's called the, uh, state of good repair program. Um, so if you have bridges that are structurally deficient, that, uh, that ties into a score. So they're looking at trying to update those and, um, basically, you know, which structures need to be replaced or repaired. And so this one is one of those structures where they've looked at it and they are recommending it to be abandoned as to be replaced because this is, I think it said it was a 160 foot long by 18 foot wide structure. Um, to reconstruct that, um, to build a new bridge would be extremely expensive. Uh, the road only, um, carries about 37 vehicles per day. Uh, so, and it has access on both ends of this road to, uh, Route 71. Um, so what the recommendation from structure bridge, they would like and what they have asked us to press the board about is actually abandoning that bridge, um, and constructing like a T-turnaround or a cul-de-sac on this, um, end of the bridge, this south end of the bridge here, um, and then turning the other end of the bridge into just a private entrance.
So you would fix a place to turn around?
Yeah, yeah. So at the end of, um, I believe it was, um, the red Gillenwater Bridge is Route 796. Um, but they would, we would construct a place to turn around at the end of the road and come back out. Um, so it would effectively make it a, uh, a dead end road basically.
Would the bridge be removed or just left in the road?
That, that's something that, um, what I'm not asking today for a definite like, you know, we still need to go through the public hearing process and everything, but what we're asking from the county is just a resolution of support to, um, look at this and pursue it. Um, we could, we could approach the property owners that are adjacent to there. I don't know if it's, that would be desirable to be left in place or, um, if they didn't. Um, that's one of the things that I'll have to talk with our construction bridge folks about is, uh, I don't know if they had intentions of leaving it there or taking it out. Um, but if there's a preference anywhere, whether we can talk through those, what the cost would be. Um, you know, basically when they, you know, they built the new road and everything, that, that meets the public benefit need. Um, it's, it would be extremely expensive to replace that structure, which is why they're asking us to consider abandoning it. Um, so that those funds can be used for other more needed, um, bridge projects.
We automatically have a, a public hearing on it. I, I rode up there the other day and this is showing me a different view. The only house that's occupied is the one with the red top out through there on that road. And they, they might be the only ones that, this red one out here, I think is, is mainly abandoned. There's no other houses on that road. And, and I thought they would have to go into the house from the, from that Gillenwater Road. I think that's what it's called. I didn't know they had an access from the, the Nicholsville Road over there, but.
Yeah.
They, they might need to have a, a say, you know?
Well, we, we wouldn't be abandoning the entire route. It would only be the section where the bridge is. So it would be from that point. Uh, but yeah, they, they would, we would be holding a public hearing for, for abandonment of that portion of 796.
And what was the reasoning for it?
Just the cost for replacement. If, if they were to try to replace this structure, uh, it would be a very, very large investment for a, a road that only has 37 vehicles a day and has access on both sides of that bridge.
Is that the only, only way that they can, they, they have to completely replace the bridge or is no maintenance or anything?
Yeah. It's, it's at a structural rate. I think it was like fours across the board. Those are basically very poor condition. Um, I, I think the bridge low grading right now is 13 tons. Um, so it's already posted. Um, and that, and once it, it gets in that condition, it starts hitting our, uh, dashboards as far as, uh, state of good repair.
So if you abandoned the bridge and it was still belonged to you guys?
No, if we abandoned the right of way and the bridge.
Oh, the right of way, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. If we would abandon the road, um, it, it wouldn't be a VDOT.
Kind of hard to imagine you'd leave it there if it was in poor condition.
And, and that's where I, I, I would envision, I, I think it would be ideal to remove it. But in some cases, we have had, uh, private property owners who have asked that those bridges be, you know, they would then end up assuming, uh, ownership and responsibility for it.
Right.
But that's something that we would want to discuss with the adjacent property owners.
The rest of the road would still be in VDOT maintenance, so.
Yeah.
The age of 89 years, that's getting close to 100 years old. So.
Yeah, yeah. It is a very old bridge. So.
I drove yesterday and I said, you know, I, I'm surprised it's in good shape as it is to be that old and, uh, but it's definitely been there a long time.
Well-built.
Well-built. Like I said.
Does VDOT own enough of right of way, uh, the bridge to create a cul-de-sac or that to buy one?
Um, we would have to approach the property owner about that to see if that's something they'd be willing to donate or something. And that's where I said, uh, all I'm asking today is whether to pursue it further if the board's in agreement with, um, the best course of action being to abandon the bridge. And then we will kind of work through the finer details of what needs to happen and actually hold a public hearing.
But you need a resolution from us first.
Just for support, yes.
We'll probably need to formulate a resolution and look at it in December, I think. So, uh, that's probably what we need to pursue. And I looked at it yesterday and I'm surprised, like, like Mr. Ricky said, that one house is there. It's just not, it's not, I'm surprised 37 vehicles. He was, uh, that kind of surprised me that many people would use, probably maybe a sightseeing or something. It's a pretty drive. It is.
From that house on back west on the creek side, there's a, there's a lot of farm equipment in there. And I'd be interested to know who owns that between the road and the creek. Cause I, I don't know how they would come in, but if, if it could become privately owned, they may want to keep that bridge whoever owns that.
Paul Williams, that's right.
Oh, is he on it?
And I believe he owns on both sides. That's where I, I said that would be something we probably want to.
Yeah.
Talk with him about.
Okay. We will do that. We'll formulate a resolution and we'll do it in decent, in our December meeting.
Okay.
There you go.
Do we need to vote on that sound like to proceed with it or with the resolution or just wait to get the resolution in by then?
Okay.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Can, can Mr. Gillenwater say something?
Yeah.
Does anybody want to make, make a comment?
You most certainly might. If you kept the podium, everybody can hear you. You'd be close to the.
Again, Richard Gillenwater. Uh, when I sit and listen to the excellent presentation for VDOT as a user, what comes to mind is deja vu all over again. Same old, same old. Uh, six-year plan as far as most people are concerned are a political, germaneering effort. Each of you have responsibilities to your district. We understand that. That's where you hear from people. So stuff gets on the plan. Uh, most people think six-year plan is a joke. There's got to be a better way. And I don't know what that is. I know my experience in business is that we would have somebody appointed that would be responsible for looking at the big picture. And I don't know who that is in Scott County and don't know what influence he or she may have in Scott County. But that's just sort of the way we feel. We sympathize with each of you because I know your comment system also. Uh, we would however like to get copies of what VDOT provided to you.
You can have my copy. I'll get another copy if you're welcome to have it. And, uh, well, the, the bridge thing too, I don't, but you seem to be welcome to it, sir.
Here you have this one too. Give it to them.
Thank you.
But give Mr. Sumter a chance. I worked with him a long time before he left and came back. But give him a chance. I think that you'll be pleased. And like I said, they're limited. Uh, that's what they can do. But you will never work with anybody any better than I would something. So just give him a chance and see, you know, and see what happens.
They have all given me their cards and wanted me to send them an email for specific things that we, we will do that. Uh, I guess our concern is that it may be a process issue as much as it's, uh, individual issue. Again, we appreciate everything you do, but we realize it's.
Well, you've heard here, I mean, it's not just your road.
I know. It's all the roads.
One time it was said here, the most important road to use, the road you use. And I get that, you know, it's like the roads I use. That's the most important roads to me. But as I'm sitting on this board, you hear about, you know, all the other roads in everybody's districts. And it's, it's not just yours, I promise you. I drove that Gate Road one day and I could not believe, uh, the shape it was in. I just wanted to see it for myself. And, uh, so anyway, it's an issue. We own 250 miles of the roads you're talking about. So there are many of them. It's like that.
And, and we understand that. Uh, I understand there's issues more important than my road.
Well, no, there's not. This is the most important road. And I- Well, no, there's not, this is the most important road, and I, and I get it, because I understand where you're coming from, and, but anyway, there's so many others to look at, and so I, at least, at least you're coming here, you're concerned enough to do that, and we appreciate you coming.
I will say that one of the bigger maintenance problems they have is coverage and the stoppage of coverage, and this time of year, the ditch is full of leaves, leaves washed down and they're flooding the car.
Yeah.
That's a maintenance issue which I plan to address, but again, thank you for your-
I appreciate you coming. Next item is Amanda Martin from United Way, so you may come now. Took a little long when I thought to get you back up here, but we got you back.
That's okay, thank you guys so much, I have me chairman and Starnes, thank you for putting that together. I know you said that, but, um, do you guys mind if I pass out these little packets to you?
Certainly can.
Right, just this will just help you so you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is my favorite Amanda's coffee stuff. All right, and like I mentioned before, my name's Amanda Martin, I am a development coordinator at United Way of Southwest Virginia, I'm here with Kristy Lester, she is our director of development, um, so thank you guys so much for taking my time to listen about United Way of Southwest Virginia and what we're doing in Scott County. Um, I did have, I have a flyer that's in front of you that looks like this, and this is just a generalization of our service areas and the counties that we serve in dark blue, um, also gives you a glimpse of our cradle-to-career approach with the end in mind, and focusing on that career in our workforce, and that is our ultimate goal, and we start at early childhood, and we work our way, whether that's through early childhood initiatives, or in our schools, we have programs that benefit that cause and so that end result, making a more sustainable workforce and careers for our kids here in Southwest Virginia. Um, I also gave you a handout behind that, that is the Scott County specifically programs that we have here, um, those are all the way in our schools and our Head Start programs, and all the initiatives that we have to create that, and to have that end goal in mind, and so, and it's really important for us to get in front of our county governments, because you all are doing the work every day, and then we have very similar goals, our, we just, it just looks a little differently, because we also all want to create more sample counties in Southwest Virginia, and specifically for you all in Scott County. And so, I am here today to propose that United Way of Southwest Virginia would be able to do a, what we call a workplace campaign with the government offices, um, that is where we invite anyone in y'all's offices to be a part of our mission, and I've attached just an example of what our typical traditional pledge form looks like that we pass out in our workforces, um, and I, I do want to mention that every cent that we raise in our workplace campaign and in our fundraising stays here in Southwest Virginia, not a penny of it goes outside of the area, and then specifically for you all, and because your heart and soul and your, all your dedication is here in Scott County, we also allow that you can allocate any of those funds to stay specifically here in Scott County, um, to enrich your own communities. Um, so I want to make sure you knew that, and then also that we have a local board that makes all of our decisions, and that's just a, we have a bunch of people in our workforce that are on our board and in our government and just local, um, people in our areas that are also making these decisions, so it's not somebody outside of the area that's going to say, well, we think that this would be great for your area, and they have no clue, um, so we make sure that everything stays local, and, and so, I've been talking to Ms. Starnes about if you guys would be interested in allowing your offices and your divisions, um, your staff to participate and be a part of our mission, and she can get me those numbers, um, so if you would just let her know your thoughts on if you would allow us to, um, maybe even talk with your staff, or just simply send out more information to them so that they can be a part of this as well, we would be more than happy to.
All right.
Do you guys have any questions, or if you do, I'll also look at my business card, if it's more of a hefty question that you want to ask me, then you can always reach out to me there.
All right, any comments or questions from this morning? Your presentation?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Next item is the animal friendly license plate funds, Ms. Starnes.
On your tablet, you have the information that we've received, I believe it's sixty dollars, let me just verify that. Yes, sixty dollars is what is available from the Department of Motor Vehicles Animal Friendly License Plate Fund this year. In the past, it's always been donated to the Scott County Humane Society, so we just need approval to do that this year as well, if that's what you choose to do with the sixty dollars.
We have a motion to designate these funds to the Humane Society, sixty dollars. Ms. Ann made a motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Hood, second, any discussion? All fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is authorization for a public hearing in December for the fiscal year 2023 budget amendment, so we do have to have a public hearing on it, do we have a motion to, to advertise for this public hearing?
Sub move.
Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Briefly, second, any discussion? All fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is to ratify the Robinson Farmer Cox engagement letter, hope they had a chance to look at that, they're doing work for the county, and Ms. Starnes, if you would.
The letter is on your tablet, they are already in the process of working on this for us, um, the fee could be up to twelve thousand dollars, um, we have a new Gatsby eighty-seven requirement this, for fiscal year twenty-two, and we got, reached out to a couple of CPA firms about doing this work for us, and we did get a response back from Robinson Farmer and Cox to do the work at an hourly rate, and they will review all of our leases and, you know, we'll land where we land on the cost, but their estimate is twelve thousand or less, depending on the number, uh, where you set the ten thousand dollar limit last meeting, that's going to help reduce our fee, because they won't be looking at every lease, it'll just be those over ten thousand dollars.
Okay, where does twelve thousand come from?
It'll be in the budget amendment that you have the public hearing on in December.
All right, all right, do we have a motion to do this engagement letter?
Sub move, Ms. Trump.
Ricky made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second?
Jeter. Jeter.
I tell you what, my ears is pretty good, it's sounding like, uh, Mr. Jeter, all fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is bookkeeping, Ms. Stevens.
Please appropriate twenty-one hundred dollars to animal control special services three five one zero zero dash three one seven zero, or money received deposited at the treasurer's office, and appropriate five thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents to share vehicle replacement, three one two zero zero dash eight zero zero one, or reimbursement received deposited, and that's all the appropriations.
Do we have a motion to do the appropriations as described, Ms. Stevens?
Sub move, Ms. Trump.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herring, second, any discussion? All fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried, grants.
And please accept Commonwealth Attorney's DCJS Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Victim Fund continuation, FR twenty-three grant four nine six five five nine.
Do we have a motion, accepting the grants as described?
Sub move.
Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second, any discussion? All fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, Ms. Tina on appointments, on social services board.
We have one appointment tonight to the social services board, Cindy Coates has served her two-term limit, so she will not be eligible to serve again, we did not receive any appointments.
Do we have any nomination for the social services board? I had reached out to some people, did not hear back, and I, do you have anyone that you know might want to serve on this, it's a, it's very, very, very important.
Could I just, could, is Hood be on the board? I recommended her.
I don't think so, because you're the, probably can't have two of you on it, I don't know that for sure, but I'd be my guess that-
We can title this till December and then if you want to research that and-
Yeah, sure.
And see, that's all right, and Ms. Kipper can find out, so we'll title that as to the, the December meeting. Next item is county attorney Ivan, Ms. Kipper.
I don't have anything today, happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions for our attorney? Next item is our county administrator, Ivan's client will be the first.
You have your green sheet in your packets, general fund balance as of today after claims is three million one hundred one thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars, and your comparison chart shows we're down about two million dollars from this time last year, that would be mostly because of tax tickets being delayed on the mailing this year because of the reassessment, uh, we don't have the money coming in at this point in time that we did last year. As far as claims, we had early sets that totaled a hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents, a couple of those that made up a larger total this time was Waste Management, forty-three thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars, and Magic City Auto, which was a Durango for the sheriff's office, thirty-three thousand five fifty-two. Current claims total two hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred eight dollars and five cents, uh, Gates City Volunteer Fire Department, Nicholsville Volunteer Fire Department, and Scott County Life Saving Crew, uh, asked for the remainder of their balance for fiscal year twenty-three, so those are some larger amounts, um, that make up that total, so total claims that need to be approved is four hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred two dollars and fifty-one cents.
One thing that I'm surprised about is how much, that three million, hundreds of one thousand, we have, that the tax has been paid to yet, I thought that's pretty good considering that the taxes haven't started coming in yet, so.
We have had some tax payments coming in, uh, people are coming in and paying without receiving their bill yet, so some of that money, it has went up, um, probably about five hundred dollars since last week, because we were down in the two million range earlier last week.
Bill's supposed to go out this week?
It should be received any time now.
All right, any comments or questions, if not, we'll, I think we made a motion to approve the pay, pay the bills.
Sub move, Ms. Trump.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ann, second, any discussion? All fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Under miscellaneous, uh, we have the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, um, November twenty-third, we're usually open, um, eight to twelve, I wanted to ask for consideration of giving that extra four hours as holiday pay, and the office is being closed the whole day on November twenty-third, we've done that a couple times in the past, but I always like to ask for permission, if it's something that you wish to do.
All right, when I worked for the state, we did that, and, uh, usually we work a half a day, it's pretty non-productive, and so I don't have an issue with it, I think it's a good idea, and help the employees, give them an extra day for Thanksgiving, so we entertain a motion to allow that to happen, do we have a motion? All right, Mr. Jeter made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Hood, second, any discussion? All fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, so that's good.
Thank you, I'm sure the employees will appreciate that, and also, I just wanted to mention the Collins Bridge dedication in Dungannon will be held on November nineteenth at ten thirty a.m., if any of you would be able to attend that, it would be appreciated. And I also wanted to mention, uh, on the United Way campaign, just, uh, if it's your desire to let the employees take a look at that and see if they wish to be a part of the United Way campaign, I wanted your blessing before-
Okay, so you want to vote on that?
Yeah, or just the majority, just your thoughts.
I'll vote on it.
Yeah.
That would, it'll correct any misunderstanding of, do we have a motion to do that, to allow employees to be a part of the United Way campaign?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Herring made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ricky, second, any discussion? All fair and purposes, an aye? Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Have they ever been in our budget, since they?
Not that I recall, since I've been, and they've not done a work, they've not asked to do a-
They never seen a request or anything? I was, I, I can't remember.
Not that I recall, but I, I could be incorrect, and for the past six years, they've not done a workplace campaign, so that, that, I guess their development department may be something that's working on that, um, more frequently since they've got a department now.
It's, it's a good deal, thank you.
So that's all I have.
On that bridge dedication, uh, the family set a couple dates that we ran with that on the nineteenth, that's the day of Santa Trinh, it's a big deal in Dungannon, uh, and so we set it ten thirty so people can come and, and be a part of that, and I have known Jack Collins, I've never not known him, I lived in Dungannon most of my life, and his, his three sons grew up with him, and so this is, with his military background, his background as being mayor and town council there, he was a big part of that community for a long time, so this is what, is a very honorable thing we're doing to honor that man, especially with his World War II service, he's one of the greatest, those in their greatest generation, so if you can come be a part of that, you know, it'll be, it'd be a good celebration to dedicate that bridge, so.
Do you have the American Legion involved in any way with that?
I don't know.
I'm not the commander, so I haven't heard of it, so.
We haven't in the past, no.
Well, we-
If you want to invite them, I mean, I don't think it'd be, it would, it would be, I think, be very-
We, we've actually done the bridge dedications before, Bridge of Lions.
Sure, if they want to come, I mean, I think the family would really appreciate them coming, so, most certainly, most certainly could, all right. Your presentation this morning from a tourism director, Ms. Pam Cox, if you would, ma'am. Pam, it's been requested, we'll take about a ten-minute break, so that gives you time
Go ahead, you're on the podium.
I'm on the podium.
Yeah, you're on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, it's Thanksgiving time. So, it's time to say thank you for letting me be here. And I'm very thankful to get to be your tourism director for these last few years. And maybe for a little while longer. So, thank you. And so, I'll go ahead with my report. And we, I think I told you...
Throw it in the view.
Okay, remember. Okay, remember last time I talked to you about doing, using CrowdRip, the local hood on Virginia Tourism. And we continue to do that. And these are Google stories that stay on Virginia Tourism website. And then they translate and they go on over to Scott County Explore, Virginia Explore, Scott County V A dot org. And we have gotten some great feedback from that. We've had one hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-three thousand Google impressions. And the story that we did on Barkham Lake was by far the most well-received. We went with, this year, we did the, with the DMO grant that I got, we did Stay a Week, Stay, Stay a Week, A Month of Lifetime. We did a digital campaign. And we used streaming programming as well as social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube. And we used... We got some wonderful data from Spectrum and the streaming overview. So, they provided some really in-depth information. So, as you can see, we reached two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and two, five hundred, five hundred and six impressions. So, we, that means we've reached that many people. And we had a ninety-eight point seventeen percent completion rate. So, that means that everybody watched it all the way through with the exception of less than one percent of the viewers. And they would show us which of the commercials that we were running had, did the best. And as you can see, they're about neck and neck. So, it also gave us a great breakdown as to the areas where they were viewed the most. And the area that came up with the greatest views was the White Forest, Durham, Kernersville, Winston-Salem, Winston-Salem area. And that's right there on down, you all know where that area is. It's probably where you get to Greensboro. So, and most of, most of what they saw was, they watched it during Spectrum News and ESPN. And Kathy McLealn, who, you all know Kathy McLealn. She was my algebra teacher at U B. But she, I saw her out in the parking lot one day. And she said that her son, who lives in Raleigh, a lot of his friends saw the commercials for Scott County. And they said, "Is that yours, Scott County?" And he said, "Yes." And he was very proud to say that it was his. Our social, oh, the social media records are just as good. The impressions that we had from the Google and the YouTube campaign was a million, five hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-three. And this also breaks down and shows you what markets were viewed the most. We use both display and digital ads. And it'll show you whether your display ads show up the most for your video. The Facebook campaigns reached three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-six people. And the best thing about this is, is that we had some great clicks to our landing page on our website. All of these took people to the landing site on the webpage. And that's what you want them to do. You want them to go on and look into your website and see all of the other things that you can do in Scott County. So, we also built a special page, a special landing page for this campaign. So, this was by far one of the, I guess, best campaigns that we've done that we've been able to see some real statistics so that we can do some benchmarking on and know where a market is and know, you know, where people are really interested in coming to this area. The northern Virginia area still stays very popular for us. I mean, that's an easy drive and still get a lot of calls from that area about the Devil's Bathtub. And if you will add... If you will add those impressions up, we had a grand total of two million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight people who saw information, who saw something about Scott County during this three-month campaign. It was a three-month campaign. We are still running a fall, a fall campaign. We did run a fall campaign with the leaves, the fall drive campaign, just on Facebook. And that finished the end of October. So, I don't have all of the figures. I don't have the report on that because it just finished. But the next time that I do a report, I will have that. This was a really active season for ribbon cuttings again. A lot of you were able to go to, well, Danny came to the ribbon cutting at Close Quarters Airbnb. This is a building that McMurrays have transformed in downtown Gay City. And Danny, you were there. I mean, it is...
I was impressed.
Amazing what they've done in a space. I don't know, it's long and thin.
Was it ten feet wide, maybe?
I don't know if it was even, yeah, maybe ten, ten to twelve feet wide. And it, it's very kind of, it has an industrial vibe to it. But, and it's just right next to the building that he purchased there on the corner of Jackson Street. And some of you all may know that, that built, that building, the other building, was purchased by someone else who kind of did a little bit of destructive stuff to it. But it's since been cleaned up. And I think Mr. McMurray has taken back up with the ownership of it. And when we were, when we were at this ribbon cutting, the town manager told me that he only had two buildings, two vacant buildings still up for lease in downtown Gay City. So, that's pretty amazing. Chris's store has been purchased. There's a gentleman from Prosperity, South Carolina, who is into, that's what he does. He does historic preservation. And I'm not exactly sure what he intends to do. But initially, he had purchased property off of Star's Blood Road for, to do an Airbnb. Excuse me. And then he came into the town and saw Chris's store. And they've been doing some, they've been doing some checking and everything. And I haven't talked to him in a little while. But hopefully, we'll start to see some progress on that. I think Ms. Hood, you went to the My Lady's Table ribbon cutting. And that was, she has a really, really good idea there. If you've ever had a child get married and you kind of want to save a little bit money, a little bit of money on the things and you have enough time, you can, you can gather up things throughout the year. But she has everything that you need there. And you just go in, she's at the Pioneer Center. You make an appointment and you go in and you talk about what you want your thing to be. And she helps you get all of that together. Now, the only thing about it is, is that she doesn't come to your house and put it up. But she boxes it all up. And then you go home and you put it together. It was really very nice. And I know that, I know Derek is going to talk a little bit about this also. But thanks to Mr. Nias, Mr. Bill Nias, here. There's a new paved walkway around the baseball field at Key Memorial Park. So, this was a Trails grant offered by D C R. And Mr. Nias applied. And he was the first to actually finish the project. This, from this pot of money, he finished the project really ahead of time, didn't he? And so, they had a ribbon cutting and the seniors were there. And this now gives access to handicapped access all the way around that park. And Joe Mead's family was on hand for the ribbon cutting. Mr. Heron was there also. And, you know, it's, it's just nice to see projects like this being done. And, you know, if you watch for those grants, there's a lot of things that you can do with, you know, even just small amounts of money. You don't have to have two million or three million dollars to make improvements. Events, I will tell you that, I would have to say that, from my perspective, everything was back to normal this year. Gay City did a back-to-school bash for the kids. And all of the merchants in downtown Gay City contributed. I mean, Paus was there. And those kids came back with backpacks full of supplies to go to school. It was really, really a good thing for the kids. And they're very well-intended, very well-organized, and just a great thing. Jethiel Daye was back. And probably one of my favorite photos that I have ever taken in my entire life. And a lot of times when you're standing there taking photos, you don't know what you've taken until you get home and you look at her. And it was this little girl standing in the car going, and it was like, "Let me fix my crown." And the young lady at the top, I can remember, I went back through all of my old photos. And I have a photo of her as a young child in a, in a sandal patch. And of course, the Jericho Shriners, I don't know, have new photos. I have them. So, it, you know, it's nice to see these young kids and how they've grown up and everything. They had, there wasn't that many people in the parade, but they had a huge number of vendors down there. And, you know, things for the kids to do. They had a log stacking competition. I guess that's what it was, wasn't it? Was it a log stack? They asked me if I wanted to try it out. And I was like, "I don't think so. Have you ever seen me drive a car?" Anyway, go ahead to the next one. And Gay City, along with the United Pentecostal Church of Gay City, Gay City Frontier, United Pentecostal Church. And I'm pretty sure that Delegate Kilgore and Todd Pillion donated to sponsor this concert. It was called Rise Up. And it featured a Christian music group called Unspoken. The Pentecostal Church, all of these were brilliant, talented musicians. I had never really listened, heard Christian music. But they are phenomenal musicians. And they didn't have a great attendance there, which, you know, it's kind of sad because they really missed seeing a great performance that evening. Papa Joe Smithy Mountain Music Fest. They had, they're turning this shit. They had some of, if you want to just click on the lady, they had a lot of the dancers from, you can just click for just a minute. And the dancers from part of both. There were two or three of them who brought their own dancing for, for the dance for Papa Joe Smithy this year and stuff that they could do. Turn that off. And then that's Eric McMurray and his band. They're really pretty good. You know, that's the band, Chris Rose Band from U B A Wise. So, we've already started working, you can turn that off. We've already started working on the Papa Joe Smithy for next year. And we, with the Smithy family has a renewed interest in making sure that this goes forward because the proceeds from this go to benefit scholarships to the Mountain Empire School of Music, Mountain School of Music. And I think it's for, mainly for Scott County students. And they're trying to find similar needs to give money to at U B A Wise. The Scott County Chamber Picnic was back on. And that was the best crowd I have ever seen at a chamber picnic. They had some great door prizes and food was wonderful. And it was just, it was just nice to see people back and mingling with each other and sitting down and enjoying it. And, you know. The town of Gay City did a second Harvest Moon celebration. That was on November, no, not November, September the twenty-fifth. If you all remember, that day started out pretty drizzling. And it was kind of slow. But in the evening, in the afternoon, it picked up. And they had a good turnout for the merchants, everything down there. And then that evening, the Tri-Cities Jazz Orchestra performed. And the Tri-Cities Jazz Orchestra has asked every year to come and perform in downtown Gay City. They love coming to downtown Gay City. Bush Mill Days was back. But unfortunately, if you all remember, it was bad and it rained. And they ended up canceling it. But they still did the charity. And Mr. Broadwater, Blue Broadwater, standing there on the right-hand side, is, I mean, is the president of the National Ruritans. And as you can, and if you live in the area and you've seen him drop around, he has a placard on his car that even designates him as the national president. But he got some really good press, if you saw the paper, about Bush Mill and the need for people to join, words I can't say, Rur, Rur, Rur.
Ruritans.
Whatever. Right. Okay, to join. I've never been able to say that. So, to join and to be members. So, he was real happy with that. Okay, Cloud Splitter came back and the Begleeds were back again working that event. And golly, they even had their favorite folklore hero was running through the park, the Hana Bay area that evening. So, that was a, that was a little scary.
Yeah, my son, he helped in that.
Oh, did he?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
He actually ran that a couple of years ago. Y'all probably don't remember me talking about it.
Yeah. That's, that's a great event. If you can, if you can, if you can run and...
It's one of the toughest ones. It's very, and they have a lot of stream crossings too.
Yeah.
I think my son said he crossed over one hundred stream crossings.
Oh, Lord. The, I think the worst one of those insurance races is at Frozen Head State Park in Tennessee. And the one at Frozen Head State Park, he doesn't have any aid stations, nor does he have any directions for you to run. So, so you're kind of just left out there on your own. And Frozen Head State Park is...
That's Cloud Splitter one hun, that's one hundred miles. That's the longest one. That's the one he ran.
That's just amazing. King Alley Wing, they had that, they had that. They didn't do it this last weekend, the weekend before. And they had a great, I mean, downtown was packed this year. So, they continue, you know, to do things and just, the extension office, four, four-H extension office. I don't know if you've ever seen any of the things that I post that they offer. But they offer some really interesting classes. And I went to this one. And that's Jill Sossman. And she showed us how to make an old-fashioned stack cake. Well, I didn't even know that, I, I mean, it's one of those things that takes a tremendous amount of patience.
They're all good.
They're good, yeah. And I really went so I could eat some. And it was really, it was, it was really good. I thought we might get to make one of our sales, but no, it's too time-consuming. Pongo Farms was back again this year. And they, they had a great year. They finished up this past weekend. And they're ready for some new things to go forward next year. See a lot of expansion.
On the previous slide, that's at the extension office?
No, they did that at the vocational tech office.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We have some new businesses coming into town. A barber shop's going to open. Do you all remember, do you all remember Marcy Gore? And Marcy was the reporter from the Tom's News who used to come and cover. Her husband, Randy, is a police officer with Kingsport. And he is getting ready to retire. And he's opening a barber shop right there. He's in barber shop right now. He's almost finished. So, that's nice. And the, so the Mexican place apparently is getting ready to reopen. El Rancho is coming in. I mean, I had watched them work, but then I thought they'd just quit. So, I guess they're getting ready to open up. I don't, I've noticed a lot of work being done on Gashie's Market, going out towards Daniel Boone. I've not stopped and asked them what they were doing. Wally's Gunshot on Weather Gap Road is, has been sold. And there are people working in there. I've not stopped. You know, I'm, I'm, believe it or not, I'm a little bit reluctant to stop and say, "Hey, what are you doing?" You know. But people think I'm being too mazzy. But I'll probably stop soon. Upcoming, well, I say one, you do it. Say, wait.
You can probably admire it. We probably kept chicken duck in my room.
What you doing? Upcoming events. Going to have Veterans Day. Everything's going to be back up. Christmas Open House, Lighting of the Tunnel. And that will be, they're going to run Lighting of the Tunnel this year for the week before Christmas. I guess Don Yanam will have their Christmas parade.
On the tenth.
On the, no, November...
December the tenth.
December the tenth, okay. I know Gay City's having their Santa train's back. So, I guess Santa train will run the same schedule, go on. Communication, we are at, Facebook is at twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. Instagram is at two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five. And I'll talk to you a little bit about Instagram in just a minute. Newsletters, I've continued to send it to the newsletters app. And my open rate on those are almost sometimes at thirty percent, which is phenomenal, amazing. Because most of them are only like about ten or twelve percent that people open. So, the publicity that we have received this year, free publicity, next one, Bill, please, is two hundred, it values two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, next one. So, I took a class, a free, a week class. And it was on creating better digital marketing. And I took it through a group called ThinkSpace. And they're out of Kingsport. It's free. I went to Bristol every Tuesday night for a couple of nights. And so, and I learned so many things that I didn't know. You know, you think as old as I am and as long as I've been around that I would know about things. And I mean, I know about things, but then I don't know how to do something. I don't know how to do a lot of the new things that they do on Instagram. But they taught us how to do those things. So, you'll, you'll start seeing some reels on my Instagram page. If you, if you saw one this past weekend. I went to, well, we went to play people ball, my husband and I did. And so, I did, I made a reel and posted, and posted it on Instagram and on Facebook. And the young lady of Olivia said that reels, that's what drives followers to your page on Instagram. I didn't know that. So, and they will, and this was free. And they'll offer several programs, you know, throughout the year. So, and the last thing that I wanted to talk about is, you have to go on to the next slide, the Virginia America Revolution Two-Fifty. So, we are to create our own local committee. And I have put down, we're having a public meeting here. I said, "Put it down on Facebook." I've invited a lot of people on November sixteenth to check the interest and to recruit members. Please, this help of me with the historic groups. You can get marketing funds. You can get V T C marketing funds. But now, to get these V T C marketing funds, you have to be declared an official community. And that has to be, so that's a resolution passed by the Board of Supervisors. So, unless we get, have this meeting next week to gauge interest and to committee. I, someone else is going to have to spearhead this. I'll, I will help with the marketing ends and getting the funds and everything like this. But this is something that runs from, you know, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-six and beyond. So, my husband is the president of the Daniel Boone Women's Trail Association. And I know that they have spoken with a camera park, kind of a camera park in Kentucky about this celebration. But I don't think they have anything officially planned or anything. But there will be funds available. And from what I read about the grant funding, there will even be some money for signage for this. So, which V T C does not give money for any signage. So, that's a good thing. So, I guess we'll just go along with this. And if we do get enough people, I'll come back next week. But there, there's a resolution that is already done and everything. And you all just have to fill it in. So, any...
Good presentation.
There you go.
Is there, is there any way we can tell how much revenue is coming in based on tourism?
You know, we get, we get a report, we get a report from Virginia Tourism Corporation. And they tell us, you know, what they see that tourism brings in. And I mean, you know, it'll say it brings in, you know, like, what?
Two million dollars?
It's a huge number. It's, it's, it's some huge number. And it supports X number of jobs. I don't have, I don't have any way myself to capture data. I don't have any way, I mean, you know, I can call individually, you know, all of the folks who, who have folks coming in and everything. But I don't have a mechanism to capture those dollars. I just go with what V T C tells us. But I mean, it, it is, it's an astr, it shows an astronomical... But I mean, it, it is, it's an astr- it shows an astronomical figure, like, in, in, you know, 2 million every year, um, in percentage changes and things like that. The number of, the number of folks and boys, so...
Would the EDA have any further contacts that they, would they be able to...
You know, I don't know. I don't know. Um, there, there are, I mean, there, there are things that you can do called geo, geo-framing and ge- um, geo-tagging where that we can tag the folks, we tag their phones and we see where they come in from. And you can go and see where they're going and they purchase items. Um, that's very, that's expensive, you know? It's another one of those things that costs money. So, um, you know, we don't have a visitor center. We are looking at, you know, doing a kiosk that hopefully will help us be able to attract some people, but...
And I think, I think you just said, I think the attraction, what you're able to show.
Yeah.
Those, those people coming in. And it would be nice if you were able to capture some sort of data, but it would be hard to do, I would imagine.
Well, I mean, you know, when I, when I fill my grants out, I have to have some numbers. So, I do call, I say, how many people I've engaged. And a lot of them, you know, I'm calling this individually, so...
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Maybe when you're, you know, maybe when you give your meal tax, you count it? I, I do count the meal taxes from, you know, the cities, but that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Derek France is here from Recreation.
Part follow-up, Pam always does a good job on her.
She does a good job.
Mine's not quite as long or detailed.
Yeah.
I'll start off, I'll mention Keith and World Park. Really, she did their job than I'll do as far as showing you what we did out there. So, really, it was all Bill. Uh, that, that's Bill's to be committed for that area differently compared to safety and accessibility there for the ball fields of Keith and World Park. So, again, that's a beautiful place. It's nice to have that in the county and what Bill did just to pass it out there. So, really, thanks to Bill. I mean, that's the deal, so. Uh, special community park, I'm working towards some USTA grant opportunities to repair the tennis courts there. Uh, we've had some issues with them since they've been built. We've repaired them before and once resurfaced them. So, they do need some work again, but hopefully we can get some grant, grant money to help do that. Um, we just completed our Otis Rotten State Farm Youth Live Valley. Uh, we had about 100 kids participate this year. Uh, the last two seasons, we've been canceled due to COVID. And so, what Pam said, now with basketball, uh, tennis and golf, and now this, we're back to normal and that's good, you know? I was happy to get back the kids, we're happy to get back. There's some pictures of us at, uh, the Church of Weber City, um, Ryco High School, Gacy High School. That was our Halloween Day, uh, we let them dress up. Uh, the kids have a lot of fun with that. Coaches dress up, kids dress up. Um, there's a tape that they like, 80s, but it looks pretty good. Um, there's, um, the greenish on the left, that's Chris Carter, one of my coaches, and that's me on the right. I forgot to show you that, so, uh, kids have a lot of fun with it.
I recommend you.
Yeah. Some people say scary without the mask on, but, oh. I do want to thank Otis Rotten State Farm, he sponsors that Live Valley, has for the last 20, 30 years, so, thank him. Uh, also want to thank Scott County Schools and Weber City Baptist Church, let us use their facilities for practices and things. We couldn't do it without them, so, uh, this is a big community project to do something like this, to hold that, so. Uh, we did host the beginner pickleball class, uh, this past Saturday. Anna Walters, I want to thank her, she's with Pickleball USA out of Kingsport. Uh, she serves as the instructor. Uh, we had a pretty good turnout, had a good, uh, we've done it before, tried to do a, a pickleball class, didn't have a good turnout. This one we had a really good turnout. Uh, still going to kind of reach out more, engage interest. Um, it's pretty easy to convert an existing tennis court to a makeshift pickleball court. That's kind of my focus right now. Um, you know, if it got big, it would be something to pursue building a freestanding, but, um, right now, just trying to use our tennis courts to maybe be multipurpose to, to try and host that for people and see what they think about it, so. Uh, that's really all on the rec side. Uh, down on the golf course side, uh, revenue over the same period right now is up over 13.5% over last year, so we're, we're still trending the right way there. Uh, price increases across the board for golf equipment, that has helped pro shops sell, but really we're just seeing lots of increased play, uh, members, new members, new players. Uh, and also the room rentals, that's gotten really back to normal. Uh, October every weekend was fully booked. I think that February was like one weekend not booked yet, so we're back to normal with the room rentals, so that's helping out that. Um, we recently hosted Attorney General Jason Biarres and former Governor Georgia Allen. Uh, they did a stop on our Southwest Virginia Bus Stop, uh, Bus Tour. I think Mr. Bricky was there and Mr. Man, Mr. Tipton, I think there was a few of the supervisors there. Uh, I really want to thank, though, the Park and Golf Course staff, the public work staff and Scott Service, they all chipped in. So, we're going to see some pictures here. Uh, kind of, they had kind of brought some stuff back up to par that we need to work on at our golf course. So, previously, that's the deck up there. Uh, we'd stained it, but you know, it was just weathered and looking, and then the, the after picture, that's after some pressure washing. That's a product called Deck Correct. It's like a thick paint. Y'all probably seen it, it's like a, has a texture to it. Really helped, probably from long ago, to give us a few extra years on that deck, so it looks a lot better. Uh, that's outside the building there. Uh, that's actually the mulch and the plants we're getting ready to put down, but you can see the difference in it. Uh, and then also, there's going to be one here. There's the entrance. I'm a big first impressions guy. What you see first is what you remember. And so, there's the after, looks a lot better, so. All those are things that may be done and through that we kind of, God, that stuff does. So, I want to thank everybody for chipping in on that. Uh, and really, the last thing I keep mentioning to him, but I want to really thank Scott Gerald with the Extension Office. We've really been working close with him still. Uh, we recently completed a seating project for the first time at the golf course. We've never overseen it there. Uh, worked with him, and I don't really want to call it overseen, it's a very targeted overseen project. Already seeing great results, we'll see the fruition of that in the spring. But, uh, just working with Scott, he's, he's smart, he's sharp, he's a great guy to work with. And he's really helped us increase our quality of turf up there. And, and the people notice that, the, the public notices, the people that come there comment on that. So, Scott's a great asset for not just us, but anybody in the county that needs any kind of agriculture or turf work. Uh, Scott's phenomenal. I've, I've actually recommended him to some of the football team for their, for their fields and he's helping them. Scott, Scott's a great asset, so. And really, that's, that's it. I know it's kind of short, sweet as usual, but everything's going to be good. We're getting ready to get our kind of slower recovery season, we want to do some maintenance projects on the course, you know, play is slowing down, but this week and the same is, we were busy last weekend, we'll be busy this week, so, uh, things are going well, though.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Thanks, thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I'll bring it down to item 18, comments, Mr. Jeter.
Uh, well, thank the board and the staff for all their good work and ask for you to help, tell us a question, we'll come through.
I'll give you a copy at the end of the meeting. Uh, we'll have our public hearing in December, but it's in the negative 182,000, I believe.
All right. Mr. Tipton?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Tipton?
I don't have anything to add.
All right. Which area?
I've had several calls and conversations about, of course, our tax tickets have not come out yet. Uh, what's the, what, was it, when are they going to be mailed?
They should be any day. They, they are at the printers and the printer mails those and the, it's my understanding they have been mailed. So, they should be received any day.
And they're going to be due when?
The 20th of November.
But the biggest, biggest thing is, you know, there's been several people that's already paid theirs that I've talked to. And they, they paid what they owed last year. So, they're still going to owe the, whatever theirs increased, is that, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Uh... Are we going to extend the date? Is there any way to do that?
Okay, no. By code of Virginia, you have to give 14 days' notice and they'll have that plus more.
I don't agree with it, but that's just whatever. No, I don't, I don't, you know? I don't know. I mean, if, if nobody has, I, I don't know how to fix it. You know, there's going to be a lot of people that have to come up with another $1,000, you know? And of course, I don't, I don't know. And then your personal property, that's going to be, did we finally figure that it's 60-some odd percent increase on our personal property, like our vehicles and stuff? Is that, is that, did we ever come up with a final? But it's going to go up quite a bit.
But that's across the nation.
Right, right, right.
Car values, that's nothing to do with the Board of Supervisors.
I understand that.
All right. Mr. Brinkin?
Uh, I, I just want to, um, brag on and thank all the people that do serve on our committees throughout the county. There's a lot of good people on those committees. And, uh, one of the hardest things to do for us is to find people to serve on committees that we need. I found out a few minutes ago, Selma would like to serve on social services. Had no idea. Social services, this past week, I've called three or four or five people and talked to them and it's just hard to find people. I wish that we had a way, uh, sadly and freely to have a website where if somebody was willing to serve on any committee, or maybe, I'd like to serve on this committee, that committee, or just a blanket, I'll serve, that they could, uh, we could have a list of people that were willing to serve. It's hard, it's hard to find people to, to serve on these committees. A lot of people that work can't because of the times and, uh, but, but I'm sure there's a lot out there that would serve if, if they had a way to know. And, and I know it's in the paper a lot, we put advertisements in the paper, but, uh, sometimes people don't notice, so, so it'd be handy if we could have a way to, to look at people that weren't interested.
We are redoing the website and it will go live in January and it'll have more features available for, it'll be more user-friendly for our citizens to go in and look at things that are available and open appointments and things like that. I think it'll be a great asset.
I think you'd... Ms. Ed.
Well, last week, I spent an enjoyable time in that field. I visited the Revata Recovery Center and got a lot of information about how they're helping people with the drug problems. And they're planning to come to our board next month to do a presentation. I think it'll be informative to everyone. And also, I had never been to the museum at the Interpretive Center and I went through that last week and it was such a joy. It was just me in there and I felt like I was in the 1700s with the sights and sounds and it was very enjoyable. Anyone who hasn't been there needs to check that out. And then, of course, you know, I get concerns all the time about paving, um, and water needs. We have a serious water needs in Scott County. I mean, I'm having people, you know, like up in Cliff Mountain, more well problems. Uh, springs are drying up from the drought that we had this, uh, past summer. And some of these are low-income people and just trying to, you know, find a situation where they can get water because, um, I saw on the news the other day that there was a city in, in Mississippi that was without water for a week and they were all upset. And I thought, wow, you should have been on Black Gum Lane for two and a half years. So, we have a serious water supply problem in Scott County. And, you know, our state-elected people, I wish they could help us with our water needs and our paving needs. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Attic?
I think, I'd like to thank the staff and everything for, you know, all the hard work you guys put out through, that you guys do throughout the month. Um, had a couple of questions about the water on Hunter's Valley. I sent Mr. Dishman an email asking him about that. I know they started, but I don't know that they've gotten very far. And I just wanted to get an update from him, but I haven't gotten anything back. Um, and I guess that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to thank the staff and all this, putting this stuff together for us. And, uh, we thank all of you and, uh, I'm sure everyone has a very, very, very happy Thanksgiving. All right, we have one item to go into closed session. Uh, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brink, a second. This board hereby is to close session per section, to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, being 8.3, Bill and State. Uh, all of our members saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So, we will go into closed session and...
Gat City or where?
Gat City, yep. And that's part of the motion too. I should have said that, yeah. It's just in Gat City. All right.